I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes from the July 12 meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, there are no special reports, audience comments in a minute to five minutes.
Good evening, Council. I'm certain you probably didn't remember what I said regarding the Aquatic Center at the last meeting.
Build it bigger.
I'm sorry?
You said build it bigger.
Build it bigger, right, you get five points.
We do listen, believe it or not, Mr. Brooks, we actually do listen.
We were all shocked that you said that.
I knew it, I knew it, I knew it, but let me shock you again, let me endorse it even further, because at this point in our history, I think a municipal pool would be a good idea. I look at my friends in Upper St. Clair and I see how successful their community and pool center are working out. Their only problem, and they readily admitted it, they didn't build it big enough, they actually need more space. But that aside, the pool in Washington isn't operating this year, the only community pool in operation as far as I know in the area is the one in Cannonsburg, and I don't know how much of a population it's handling. But if we go ahead with this, I'd really like to see a combined pool, aquatic center, and a new community center, combined in one, yes, and we're talking multi-million dollars. But I'm wondering how we could finance it, and I don't think we have enough support from the taxpayer, certainly I don't want to be burdened with a substantial increase in taxes, but there are other ways of financing things. And I was looking at what's going on with Council, we expect and I expect to see a new member of our Council later this year, Mr. Ross, Matthew Ross, he's a vice president of Ryan Holmes, in case you didn't know, do any of you know this gentleman?
I'm just, I'm all aware.
Very good. I'm wondering if it would not be prudent, given the fact that when I went to sales school, I was told by Dale Carnegie that you will not get the business unless you ask for it. And I'm thinking as well, Joe Biden says, kick in your fair share. And I'm just wondering if we can approach some of the people, organizations, and businesses who have seen, who seem to have done so well in Peters Township, and ask them to kick in their fair share. I'd like to see, say, Ryan Holmes match us dollar for dollar, I think that would be a good start, because if we could do that now and get that squared away, I think we could have an operable, call it a community center and pool together. And I would hope that we would be able to approach some of the bigger organizations, the home builders in this township, and ask them to do their fair share. They've all benefited from building in Peters Township, maybe time to kick back in. I know they're paying their way now, but I'm thinking to help establish a more and better connection with the community, they may want to help finance that pool, aquatic center, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Peter Glasser, 143 Longview Drive. For the last 10 or 15 years, Longview Drive has been steadily deteriorating. We pay the same rate of property taxes that everyone else does, we have received little to no road repair service for more than a decade. Public Works Department occasionally puts patches in the potholes, which tend to fall out after a few months, leaving even deeper and wider potholes. More worse than this, the size of the road had fallen away in many sections, leaving a significantly narrower cartway on a road that started out narrower than most township development roadways. When a delivery truck comes down our road at the same time as residents approaching from the opposite direction, we often have a choice of either going into a half-foot-deep sharp rut where there used to be road, or driving up on a neighbor's lawn in order to avoid a collision. If someone parks in front of their home on garbage day, the garbage truck will not go past that point because they deem it too risky, and those of us who live below that point simply do not get garbage collection service that week. I understand Council has passed an ordinance that amounts to a statement of your intent to rebuild and take over the minimum service streets, but that no funds have been budgeted to do so for Longview, and that there is no time-specific committed timetable to do so for Longview. A contractor who was working on Joe Matt last week told a neighbor that there are no current plans to do any work on Longview. Both I and my neighbors have brought this up, township staff and council, I stood right here in the fall of 2019 talking about this matter. Longview Drive needs to be rebuilt before the winter, because at some point it will be too challenging for a township plow truck to plow the snow without risking damage. In addition, it is dangerous to walk down the road, let alone drive down it, because debris from road deterioration is scattered around the steep hills of the street. I've driven down the streets that most of you Council members live on, I cannot think of one that is as badly maintained as Longview. We don't really care about the awards you get for well-written financial reports with pretty glossy pictures or the grass that gets cut in township parks, when we have to drive down a street that looks like the highways in Iraq after the F-16s came through. We need the basics of a safe, decently maintained road, thank you.
Well, I thought there was supposed to be some remediation for Longview this year.
The type of work that is being discussed is something that's going to take an engineered plan to be able to reconstruct that road, but we should be maintaining that street, and I don't know this for a fact, because I don't know everything that the Public Works Department does on a daily basis, but the direction that the Public Works Department was to go down, survey the street and do repairs. But the kind of things that Mr. Glasser is looking at is actually something we've talked about, and it'll be part of the discussion this fall as we put together the budget, and the first thing that needs to happen is just as we have done over on Laurel, there needs to be engineered drawings.
Right, I understand, I would refer to what was going to be in the interim, if you started hard work seeing it out there.
Yes.
Can you find out?
Sure.
Has money been allocated for engineering work on Longview?
Well, no, because, Mr. Glasser, as you recollect from your own council, our budgeting process begins in September of the year, and we'll put together the budget for next year, so that will be part of that discussion, and it will be balanced against all the other things that the township needs to address, but.
So maybe some in the future.
Well, no, I think there's going to be money budgeted to do engineering work on that road, as well as Maplewood next year. You know, the problem with these roads, given their length and condition, is the expense associated with totally reconstructing the road, and that's exactly what needs to happen. As you well know, on your street, there isn't anything that can be repaired and make it right, it has to be reconstructed, so it's going to take engineered drawings to be able to do that, and it's going to take, and what I think what's going to make it more challenging in your street, it's going to also take the installation of storm sewers to be able to make it work correctly, so.
Do we not have a right-of-way issue also for turnaround at the end?
Yeah, we need to get a turnaround, and that's been a long, longstanding problem. One of the things that we want to do, as the summer comes to an end and the engineering department isn't quite so busy, is to sit down with that property owner and talk about what we can do in terms of striking a deal to get a turnaround down there, if that doesn't make sense.
How often do we, do you guys have issues with the garbage truck not going all the way to the end?
Well, it depends, it's usually not the residents that will park in the street, but the lawn cutter might park in the street, and they won't go past that. And if a resident wants to park in front of their home, they won't go past it.
See, this is the first I've heard of this.
They're not going to drive off the side of the road.
And then how long has this been a problem, because honestly, this is the first.
This has been deteriorated for 10 or 15.
No, I understand that, but the whole issue of the garbage trucks not going all the way to the end, that's the first I've heard of this.
I've not heard of that.
Because that should not be happening, if you're paying, at a minimum, the road being aside, if you're paying for a service, I mean, the idea that they're just deciding they don't want to take their truck around.
Probably haven't, my name is Richard Muse, I live at 142 Longview Drive, that's happened probably about a half a dozen times, I guess, in the last couple of years. And, you know, as far as the turnaround, we don't get leave service, I mean, the truck won't come down and do the leaves because it can't turn around at the top of the street.
There has to be a turnaround on that street, it's, you know, we have, it's not the only street, but it's one of the streets that is so long, and what has to happen there is people have to back out, and that just is not the safe way to do that.
Well, just a question, is there a policy of when you would redo streets, or how, you know, approximately how many years you redo streets and?
We do have a policy, but the problem is, you have been on minimum maintenance road, and we're not really happy.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
It isn't?
No, the street goes down into, there's like a culvert across the, underneath the street, and then there's newer houses, there's about six or eight newer houses at the top of the street, that is not, I mean, that's not an old road, that was probably installed in 1980.
Yeah, I'm talking about, but Longview's a unique situation, it's minimum maintenance up to a certain point, and then the end of it, I forget, our plan was, it was 1980.
That is on our list of roads to do.
Yes.
I mean, I moved in there July, well, I bought the house legally July 31, 1993, and they redid the old part two days, I guess the Thursday before, the Wednesday before that, I moved in on a Friday, so it would have been the 29th, that's the last time that road's been touched, other than fixing potholes in 1993.
And that's why the townships, again, Longview is proof of a number of the streets that were handled the same way, they were attempted to keep in the condition in which they were taken over, which did not meet township specifications. So we are in the process of beginning to bring all of those streets up to township standards, so this year it is Joe Matt, we have a grant application in to do work on Laurel and Pinewood, and the intention is to do that street next year, because it's engineered this year, and then next year, as part of the budget discussion, is talking about doing engineering work for Maplewood and your street.
And so that wouldn't, so nothing would happen until 2023 then?
I think at the earliest that's when something would happen, because we would be attempting to, we need engineered drawings to proceed to the Washington County Conservation District to get assistance with the construction of the road, and until those engineering drawings are done, we can't make that application, that application process opens up right now. So, in the case of Laurel, we're right now have made an application under the Low Volume Road Program.
Can you at least get them to fill in the road, sections of the road on the side that have fallen?
Absolutely, there's no reason.
Or a half a foot.
Well, you might as well do the whole street, Pete, because there's so much of that, that, I mean, that's probably 50% of the asphalt you would need to repair the whole street.
You know, it's my personal opinion, and I said this when we were talking about the roads, that we need to focus on infrastructure, and maybe just quit buying things that we might bite down, and whether that also needs style of that or equipment, but he needs to, and I think infrastructure is a priority, and I will advocate during the budget discussion that we escalate this as much as we can.
Well, I appreciate that, because as a taxpayer, you know, we're not getting our fair share, I mean, we're paying the same amount of taxes, everyone, we're not getting the same, we're not getting the same services, including the leaf service, because the truck can't go up and turn around.
For the garbage trucks, could I ask a question? You said homeowners, obviously you know when your garbage pickup day.
Every Tuesday, yeah.
Okay, so if people are engaging lawn people, could they say, like, don't come here on Tuesday?
No, we've done that.
Oh, and that won't help?
No, I mean, we've done that, I mean, it has helped, it's helped a little bit.
Does that mean that, I think?
But people still, I mean, for example, my mother, 95-year-old mother-in-law lives in the area, she's got, she's got two therapists and an nurse coming virtually every day, they park out in the street.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Good morning. Take care, please. Thank you. You know, one finished business, remove the new business resolution, planning to high for quarter, say Act 537 Sewage Facility.
So, the Petmania Sewage Facility Act was developed for the purposes of creating an obligation for municipalities to plan for the future treatment of sewage, and so, you know, under that plan, all municipalities have to develop and implement a comprehensive official sewage facility plan that addresses both the present and future disposal needs. These plans are modified from time to time, and you'll see this when we get subdivisions in. There is also an obligation to create a general plan so that all areas within the service area of the authority have a plan for how sewage will be handled, and that's what this does. This plan was developed by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority to handle the area that is the part of the Pine Forks watershed that's located in Peters Township. This is off of Churchill Road, there's eight parcels there, it's the border with Bethel Park. So what the plan calls for is the construction of a pump station at this location, on a piece of property that is currently owned by the sanitary authority, and then sewage from these eight parcels would arrive at that pump station by gravity, and then at that pump station, they would in essence be pumped back up the hill towards the existing sewers that the Peters Township Sanitary Authority has. Now, this is not the ideal solution, but it is the only solution that is available. There is, in fact, a, where that substation is located, I can't point it there, where that substation is located, right here, there is an interceptor that goes to the sewage facility plant that's located in South Park that treats the sewage from all of these. And if anybody was to do this rationally, you would connect onto that pipe, that interceptor, and take the sewage to Bethel Park. There's been discussions going on about this, that go the whole way back to 2003. Bethel Park, because of capacity problems, is not interested in accepting sewage from this location, so the only solution that is left to the sanitary authority is, again, to gravity feed it down and then pump it back up the hill. Now, as a practical matter, nothing's going to happen with this, there is no plans on the sanitary authority's part to construct this, because the Peters Township Sanitary Authority does not construct sewer lines to facilitate the development of vacant property, and if this is ever to occur, it will only occur when the developer assumes the expense of this. What I would hope would happen, if and when that time comes, is that we would once again reengage a discussion with Bethel Park and find out whether or not it's possible to do this on a gravity basis. But it.
Could you clarify, though, in the body of the notes, it made it sound as if they were going to go ahead and construct the pump station, so are you saying that's?
I don't.
They're going to write the plan so that it would allow them to do it, and they're not going to do it?
I don't think there's any, there would be nothing to pump if they do that, if they lined to connect this.
No, I understand that, I just.
But when I asked Enoch, you know, what is the motivation behind this, they bought this piece of property down here, there's a home on that piece of property. At one point in time, they actually talked about putting the package treatment plan in that location. DEP is not interested in having a treatment plant, a small treatment plant there, and so therefore, the solution has to be to get it back to their, to the brush run plan. And what they wanted to do is they want to sell off that home, they want to get out of the business, they're actually renting that property right now, they don't want to be a landlord, so they're going to sell off that home and hold on to enough property to be able to put the substation in, I mean, the pump station in.
There was a reference, and I keep, I didn't make another word, there was a reference in here about, this came to Council in 1995?
Yeah, that's when the Portini property became the sanitary authority part.
But the plan wasn't amended at that time, you care?
No, because it wasn't clear how the sewage was going to be treated. Like I said, at one point in time, it was a package treatment plan, there were discussions back in 2003 with Bethel Park, that went nowhere, they revisited that in 2020, Bethel Park's still not interested, so this is the only option that's really available.
DEP seems, I have a problem with telling us how to do it, so what's wrong with telling South Park, Bethel Park, that they're going to take that sewage down where it belongs?
Well, I don't think you can, and their problem is, that interceptor that comes, where this would dump into, is over capacity, and their plant is right now under capacity as well.
So at this time, when we had the Portini discussion, we had the Irish Town Road extension issue, but that's been solved.
Yes, because all of this up here is sewered down, and it all drains this way.
I remember when we talked about the package treatment, and it locked it all down. Yeah, I remember people showing up, they were, the pitchforks and.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number, what is the resolution?
07. 3. 03.
03. 0703, amending the Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan so as to provide for the treatment of sewage in currently dissoored areas of the Pine Fork watershed within Peters Township.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. It requires approval by the Planning Commission, and I was looking through the minutes and didn't see that it was actually on the agenda or in the minutes.
I'm not sure that it requires Planning Commission approval, they offer that to them for their information, it's not a requirement.
Yeah, the Act 537 plan's approved here.
Well, I just wondered, because it affects the property, so I thought perhaps that's why, so you're saying that wasn't a requirement?
Correct.
Okay, that's all we needed to know.
In favor? I oppose. Awarded a bid for public works uniforms.
Right. Yeah, sure, the township received two bids to provide public works uniforms to 20 of our employees in the public works department, and then also to provide 38 roll-off mats at township facilities. The prices you see on the screen right there, that's an annual cost based on the unit price per public works employee for their uniforms, and then for the roll-off mats at every single township facility. The low bid was model uniforms, we checked their references, and the references all spoke satisfactorily of the service, so it's my recommendation that we award this three-year contract, the model uniforms, based upon the unit prices and fees in their bid of July 8, which was following the memo in the docket.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Change order for 2021 pavement maintenance program contracted with Liboroni.
So with the last council meeting, Council authorized the installation of the pond wearing course on Ironwood Estates as part of the 2021 road paving program. What's in front of Council tonight is a formal change order with Liboroni that will allow Liboroni to move ahead with that project. The change order's in the amount of $70,752.86. As stated before, this cost will be paid for by the developer, Benjamin Marcus Holmes, as well as the P. associated with doing inspections of that project.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change order for Liboroni for the 2021 pavement maintenance program to include the installation of the pond wearing course on Ironwood Estates for $70,752.86.
Second.
Discussion.
A quick question, will you be adding engineering fees? I ask Mr. Swine as last.
We are going to, we're going to be adding, there really isn't engineering fees per se, but there are inspection fees, and that will be charged.
Now, does this include the striping in of those traffic islands?
I think, my guess is that's going to be done by us afterwards.
Are we doing that ourselves?
Either that, or we'll get the parking lot payment, we'll support it. Whatever the cost is, it'll also come out of the.
That was going to be my next question, okay.
That's the important.
Thank you. Send the focus.
All right, favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm going to abstain.
A easement for West Penn Power across township-owned property located at 330 Valleybrook Road, East Mary Road, for purpose of relocating power lines.
So, this is a piece of property that's under lease to Mr. Robinson. If you go down Valleybrook Road, what you'll see is that the power line cuts across Valleybrook Road and then runs down the center of the property where the creek is located. What Mr. Robinson would like to do is to have this line relocated back up towards the right-of-way, so as to remove it from the property here where the intention is to put the coffee shop, so.
I'm curious why the current India.
What's it?
I'm curious why the power lines went, usually they're along the road.
Well, in fact, we were talking about that today, I'm actually a little bit in shock that these aren't in a right-of-way, because that generally is what the power company prefers so that they can maintain them. The good thing about this is, from what I understand, is that if in fact these poles are located back up at the road, if you go down Valleybrook Road and look, the telephone lines are so low in that area, and the telephone lines would be placed onto these poles and raised as part of this, so.
Will it be any expense to the township?
No.
I don't think so.
And this is actually going to benefit not just the coffee shop, but the other part of the property that Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
And do we have any idea what the ETA on the coffee shop is?
I know they're in PennDOT for HOP, so.
So they have someone who's going to build it, or is he going?
He's going to build it, I don't know that he has the operator yet.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an easement so as to allow for the installation of utility poles by West Penn Power on township property located at 330 Valleybrook Road.
I'll second. Discussion. Just a second, if I could say something. The property adjacent to the roadway in some, along some sections of Valleybrook don't look to be as stable as they could be, there's been situations in which the roadway has slipped away, and I'm just concerned that if we put those poles in, is there a potential that we're going to run into a soft soil or soft underbedding, and should it be evaluated by our engineering staff to store final approval?
State.
I don't think there's that much of a slope here.
Just a thought.
I take it the solicitor's review, the easement has no issues with.
Yes. Okay, second in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Easement for Mark and Molly Siachi across township property located behind 62 Will Scarlet Road for the purpose of managing stormwater.
So this is a, there's been a long history of damage to the home by Mr. and Mrs. Sakachi at 62 Will Scarlet. The problem is that, and this is an older development where you do not have stormwater management, and in between their home and the homes up above, there is a piece of township open space. And in between their home and the homes up above, there is a piece of township open space that's located here. This, our open space is in its natural condition. If you look at the contour lines, how they bend, at this point where they, where they bend, this is where water flows. And over the years, there have been a number of times when the home and the pool have, have had damages as a result of stormwater. What makes it even more difficult is that what you see here is a sunken patio. So it's like from this line here down to the patio, it's six feet down. There's a van door here. So when this, when this floods, it gets onto this patio and then you, then it goes into the, into the home. So over the years, there's been a variety of things done to attempt to address this. This is a draw, this is a picture from 2010. You can see this trench line, which is a new storm sewer installed by the township to provide the Sikachis with a way to take the water off of their property and into the storm sewer system. This road drains in this direction. That's why you, when it was constructed, there was no catch basin here because this is actually the high point. I was unaware of this, but I guess after that storm sewer went in, the first attempt was to do a rock channel that runs the length of the property from the street back towards our open space. I think this failed and this is what caused the township and Sikachi family to work together to install a storm sewer. The township picked up the cost of the pipe and the, and the catch basins and the property owner paid for the installation. That has worked up until recently, but there's, there's a problem. The catch basin that's located kind of back here on our property where the, where that thought is, the, there needs to be a swale installed to channel the water from behind this property in this direction to get to that catch basin. And the only way to do that is to be on our property. Because of the pool, the location of the pool and other things on this property, there's no way to locate this swale on their property. So what, what's, is on council's agenda tonight is an easement, a 21 easement across this property that would allow them to construct this swale as well as to maintain it. One of the things that when we were out on the property with the property owners that we, we recognized is that in our open space, there are a, a number of trees that, one, present a safety issue and also would be an impediment to being able to construct this swale. Because it is a safety issue, we have authorized those trees to be removed. And, and I don't know whether that work has been completed yet or not.
Paul, looking at this, how do we get to that open space? Because is it landlocked? How's it going to say?
It's landlocked.
So would they be interested in buying it from us?
I don't think you can sell it unless we can get a release from all the property owners of the land.
We had that issue with Bill Johnson, remember?
Yes. We have that issue with this current solicitor too.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, we made a lot of this work up a while ago. I don't think Frank was one of the councilmen. But I, I mean, I recall the evolution of what we've done here. I don't, I don't see a downside.
I don't see a downside.
I think a lot of us were out there standing a couple of years ago.
We, we visited it a while ago.
What was, what was the purpose of that open space?
You know what? You're so far back that I, I don't know, you know?
There's a lot of those similar open spaces in that neighborhood.
Well, I think a lot of it was simply to preserve, you know?
The woods.
The woods.
Which are now all dead.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to say. And the problem is what you now have is a huge liability because all these trees are dead there. You know, we're standing there looking at this, this easement and you're, you've got a dead tree that's fallen on another. It's being hung up by a branch, you know, so you can't believe that.
Well, and looking at their lot, you probably have about maybe 55, 60 feet of frontage there anyway. You couldn't even, couldn't get vehicles back there even if you wanted to.
No, in fact, to be able to do the work that they want to do, their, their neighbor is working with and that provide access. Because otherwise, they can't even get back there to do the, to create the swale.
That was a piece of, way back when, 70s and 80s, we tried to clean up some pieces of open space. Township accumulated little pieces for, you know, you have to dedicate an acre of open space. We had an acre of open space.
So aside from the Sikachis needing this easement for a swale, do people routinely congregate in there or walk through there? Okay, so we're going to take down, and I appreciate we're going to take down trees to enable the swale. But we had a whole conversation before, in another meeting, about trees along the trail and trees on other places that we're not planning to do anything about.
Oh, well, we have...
I mean, we have money, but we...
Well, I gotta say, we're, quite frankly, in the last month, we, we have, today, trees came down on Sugar Camp Road. We did trees on, on the trail.
I know, you could be a $60,000 annually.
Yeah, there's another...
Should be increased.
There's another set of trees coming down off of, off of the trail, so.
Another infrastructure issue that's probably more important than something. I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township official to execute an easement to allow for installation and maintenance of a private stormwater management facility on township open space adjacent to 62 Will Scarlet Road.
Second.
Another discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Mary, Carol and Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the paper report for this period, which is just under $300,000. And I reviewed the accounts payable invoices, which totaled about $618,000 for operating expenses and capital. I find these to be in order. There's also a credit card statement for $16,700 that was sent with the docket. I knew that we approved these.
Second.
Another discussion on that? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The funeral correspondence, anybody want to talk about any of the reports?
I do. First of all, there were only five private pool permits this month, so things are slowing down. Under engineering, I had asked Mr. Swine about the, a couple of things on his report, one of which we're going to talk about the Rizzo payment for the spillway. I wonder if we had come with a number yet for that? They originally said $200,000, $400,000. And what was your take on what it could end up being?
On the council update, you know, the design of the alternatives analysis for this spillway, Rizzo's engaged Rizzo's associates a couple of months ago. We had a meeting with DEP regarding the new rainfall study. The long and short of it is that we were hoping to get some relief from the spillway design flood from the new rainfall study. There's again been a change in the way DEP dictates what storm events to use. It used to be the 24-hour storm event. It's now a combination of the two, the three, the six, the 12, and the 24. Whichever one produces the highest spillway design flood, that's the one to go with. Unfortunately, we, we're dealing with a very small watershed, a very big lake. So as you can imagine, the rainfall intensity is what drives that number. It's not necessarily the total volume of rainfall, but it's the inches per hour. You get these quick heavy hitters and it gets into it. So, long story short, our spillway design flood is about what it used to be. What we thought it was under the old regulations for 24-hour storm events. So that's, that's not good news, but I think Rizzo's done a good job to do everything they can to try to calculate their way around it. And I don't think there's any way around it, so. Our original thought of maybe getting away with a side channel spillway, which would be, you know, relatively low cost item, I think that's probably out the window at this point. So now Rizzo's direction has come up with some alternatives, like they were contracting to do. But I just, Paul and I, you know, looking at this, I think that no matter what they come up with, it's going to be a pretty big ticket item. What that is, we don't know yet. We'll wait to see that. But I think we're going to know before we do the budget in, in the fall, what kind of number we're looking at.
One of the intents of, in terms of the timing of doing the study was to put us in a position so that when we were sitting down talking about the budget, we would have a number in front of us so that we could plan around that, so.
Thank you.
Sure, any way you could do a combination of the side spillway plus the inner top spillway?
Anything's on the table. I know just, you know, from years ago, we got the original letter, I did some napkin sketches and stuff. And the side channel spillway would have to be so big that it was just imfeasible to handle that whole flood, so.
I'll just maybe take, take some of the load off in a lower cost manner.
Right. You know, one of the things that I pointed out to Rizzo is that, you know, the lake was constructed in 1932. The original spillway's in good condition, but it's still, you know, 90 years old. Is there a way that we could lower that and replace it? You know, if we have to lower the level of lake, we might be able to take advantage of some of the storage volume in the lake to, you know, kind of attenuate that peak flow. So there's, there's a number of things on the table that they're going to look at.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm surprised Mr. Merrill didn't ask this, but I noticed in the solicitor's report, there was a reference to something that was proposed. Something, the Seating Valley, all of the Seating, you subdivide part of this property and build a restaurant and recreation facility. Does that recreation facility envision an aquatic facility or a pool?
Yes.
It does? That's what it's supposed to be? Okay.
I need to know.
And...
I wish it was best possible.
And that's, that's going to come to council because some of that facility already exists. They're going to come in and subdivide that property off. And they're going to need a special exception, which will be granted by the zoning hearing board to do that. So we're going to be bringing that to council for you to review and offer any suggestions you might have for conditions that the zoning hearing board would set.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Can I raise my hand?
One of the things that's at your desk is the first draft of the revised Peterstown Ship Employee Handbook. My goal is to have that on the agenda at the next meeting. And so if people want to review that and have any suggestions for how we might improve it, there's a memo on top that outlines the, what I would consider to be the significant changes to the, to the handbook. One of the items in your docket is information concerning a, a decision that was made by the Parks and Rec Board related to the enforcement of rules. And I just think, quite frankly, rather than to bring that in front of all of council, I think we would just do, be much better served by having a subcommittee of council to meet with a subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Board as well as the associations involved, rather than to have that at our meeting, so.
Paul, I have a question about the handbook updates. You know, and there's this parental leave, you know, blah, blah, blah. It says treats the birth of a child as an illness.
What about if they, adoption? Like if they adopt a child, is that a symbol? Does that encompass that? Yeah, we can say right now...
You know, if they adopt somebody that's, you know, ten, maybe not, but...
What we do, yeah, under our current policy, for a, a mom giving birth, that's treated as an illness. So if you have sick days, you can take your sick days. And if you don't have sick days, you go on disability and you receive two-thirds of your pay. In terms of leave for a father, when a child is born, you get four days off at full pay. And then you're expected to be back at work or you're taking vacation. So what, what I'm proposing is where we would create a parental leave so that mothers and fathers would be being treated the same and that they would, they would be, in terms of that parental leave, they would be given off two weeks for the birth of a child or the adoption of a child. And the, the mother would still, after the, that two weeks, be entitled to use sick leave and disability coverage to get to. And it's normally six weeks out before they're coming back, so.
Okay, that's a question. Thank you.
I'll get back to your committee suggestion. Personally, I think that'd be a really good way to handle this with the rest of council.
It's fine with me.
I don't have a problem. How about if we had like a three-member committee? You can't have four, because that's a six-foot floor. Anybody particularly that could restore on that?
I figure I have a lot of experience with you, but who else would like to?
I'll do it.
I'm sending is the need to get together. I'm going to be away during the time. I would do it, but I'm going to be here next week.
I'm doing it.
I guess here's my question, Paul. Were they able to actually attribute anyone getting sick as a result of this?
I don't, you know what? And I don't know the answer to these questions.
Okay, because I mean...
And, and I really don't think you want to debate that here tonight.
I understand, that's just, I'm just curious to know, that's...
Yeah, I think that, let's let the committee discuss this. Monica, Jim, Frank, and you guys can set up a, toward real time.
Well, I'll, I'll get Ms. Harmel to be in touch and organize this.
And hopefully at the next meeting, report back.
All right.
Sounds good? Okay?
I have two things, Mr. Chairman. No one else does. I would like to ask council, I asked Mr. Jurovsky for some detail on the credit card payment, only because there's so many Amazon, 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 without any kind of particular detail. And he was, he told me that they, he tracked and he was quite able to give you this. Does council have any interest in seeing anything like that? For, for the breakdown of any of the purchases on the credit card?
What percentage of the expenses is it?
Well, that's one example. There's a lot of Amazon, some are larger purchases. I didn't know whether, what council's desire might be related to million or about the...
I agree with reviewing.
Okay.
I'm sure Ryan's, Ryan's...
I did ask him sometimes.
I did, but it's going to do canoe.
Yeah.
The vast, I will say, the vast majority of them, the, the biggest user is generally the library because it gives them access to books and DVDs they can't get otherwise. So that generally is...
Do they place those orders directly or do they go through you?
We have an Amazon business account, of which I'm the principal overseer, but the ultimate, the approval occurs at the department head level.
Yeah, but I mean, who, who actually makes purchases?
The departments do. Yeah, the departments do. These are with purchasing cards that are issued across all departments. And it just so happens that some of those purchases occur with our Amazon business account.
Yeah.
Well, in the interest of transparency that Swine was asking, the other thing I would like to suggest, Brian, if they don't do it. Amazon has a smile account where you can bill on credits for nonprofits. Do we designate anybody for that?
The, no, we do not. The Amazon business account that was set up was actually set up by their government purchasing group. So I don't know to what extent the nonprofit would be optional, but I can, I can talk with the people who set it up.
I just wanted to add a little cash for the library. I mean, the, they do add up. And the second thing I'd like to ask, not to be a broken record, but I think that we have asked about a number of issues with Peterstown School District, the status of the new middle school, the plan for the old middle school, the question of use of a swimming pool, and also, when is the studio going to be done?
The studio is done. The, the middle school is on schedule to be opened with a startup school in August. The pool occupancy is delayed. They're in a dispute with the general contractor over the painting of the facility. And it does not appear that that's going to be resolved quickly. So they do not anticipate having access to the pool at the startup school.
And what about the building across the street?
They, they still have not made any decision as to what they're doing with that building.
We just remind the, part of the plan discussing, just a part of our decision-making process was conditioned really to an extent on how it became part of the Peters.
Available.
Is it available for the downtown?
Correct. I think you should just put it on the, we have that joint session, joint session in January, whatever. By then, you know, they'll be closed, the new one will be up, it would get through for a month. By the end of the year.
Well, and my understanding is, although I have not been to the building, is that everything has been moved out of the existing, which they can right now.
Well, part of the concern I have is that rumor goes around that they're apparently thinking about also leasing that to a different type of school, which would again be a nonprofit, no tax. That's problematic, so maybe, I don't know about by the end of January, maybe we can find out. If they're gonna be discussing that, it'll be before the end of the year. Thank you for the updates on what you've been.
Anything else under the discipline?
Yeah, just two, I have two other things myself. One, I know this probably means little to council, but one of the audits that we're subject to is an audit by the other general's office of our pensions, and that, of all the audits we have done, that probably is the most challenging. What has happened there is, instead of auditing a two-year period, they have, were unable to be here two years ago, and so they have audited a four-year period. So it's a, it's a giant scavenger hunt, but, you know, and one, the only reason I bring it up is that that's been complete, that there have been no findings, and a lot of the work that's associated with that going as smoothly as it's done is Mrs. Klima, who handles our payroll and HR, and also Mrs. Croyle and Mrs. Russell who do our, a lot of our bookkeeping. It's a credit to their organization and effort that has resulted in being able to do that four-year audit without, without any findings.
Thanks for acknowledging that. They do it.
Oh, they.
All the time.
All the time, and they, they are just a remarkable team, and it's actually one of the things that Ryan and I enjoy is working with them because they represent the township very well. The other thing is, Mr. Cozer had asked for the Manway acquisition of the property to be back on the agenda. That was, was going to be tonight, but Mr. Berthold hands law firm could not be here. It is scheduled to be on August 9.
Great. Cell towers. We had a discussion on the drop zones here, on batteries in the downtown center, and certainly Rolling Hills. Just wondering, have we had any feedback on?
I haven't.
It's just getting, it's getting worse. It's not getting better, it's getting worse.
And I would agree with you. I think that service is actually getting worse. I have not had a chance to follow up on that since you were gone. Ed is the person who has all those contacts over at AT&amp;T, so we will be following up on that.
Related to that, there was a woman at a prior, at the prior council meeting who told us she moved into the waters and indicated they don't have cell service in that building. I mean, that's.
Well, I don't have it in my office.
Well, I would imagine, you're right, you're right, but that's.
And highsters.
She said she has to go outside to talk.
That doesn't mean. Like I talked to him, highster, they just don't bring their credit card machine in their backup facility.
Oh, wow.
And they don't have backup because they don't have cell, can you consider?
I mean, this is.
But I mean, it's, I don't understand how there can't be some sort of a booster thing.
Well, there needs to be small cells put in, and it's there, it's over at the public works garage, you get a.
It's not like you talk about.
I have cell service in my house.
Again, now I got my office here for 15 years, it's getting worse, it's not getting better.
And I agree with you, I have.
I don't know whether it's because we have more people coming in, or that drains it, I don't know.
It's dropping calls in places I've never had calls dropped.
It's not bad at Rolling Hills Park entrance, but it's an old road, drops calls and, I hate to turn blackmailers into the little. Could we put, I mean, put a tower at Peterswood, I mean, at Rolling Hills Park, be an option? I thought we had to change the ordinance or something to get that done.
Co-located. Well, we own the property, so, I mean, our, to be in compliance with our ordinance, it would have to be co-located. You own the property, we certainly can allow ourselves in the park to put up a tower.
Do a little, be a little vigorous for.
Could we, could we try and identify places that they could put some sort of.
Well, they, they know where they can do that because they can do it anywhere there's an existing telephone pole.
Right.
See, if you go down to the old high school, if you look, as you're going down towards the Thomas Crossroads, on the left-hand side, on the top of a telephone pole, there's this black object, that's a cell tower, and that's a 5G cell tower.
The high school was there?
The old high school.
So cell service there?
There's a 5G tower there, and I think it's AT&amp;T.
They have intensity maps where they probably know where the township, what the service is, and there's no excuse whatsoever for all the black areas.
They're aware that the town center cell service is bad and they're trying to figure.
I'm glad they're aware of it.
They're trying to figure out how to fix it.
15 years. And then I noticed that they finally put up the.
The banners.
The light post of the, at the lodge room, we had talked about, you know, putting, like I said, we would pay for one of our property.
Yes.
At 455. I'm just wondering, you know, the, you know, where the creep comes in between my property and.
Moreland.
Morelands. I don't know who's supposed to maintain this, I don't know whether that's, we share that, we can have a discussion on that, because the weeds are growing up onto the sidewalk.
That's your responsibility or Moreland's responsibility?
I don't know where my property is.
Well.
I'm happy to do it. Okay, anything else?
So where are we at on 225 and 227 Center Church? I was reading in.
We're waiting on John to give us some direction about how to proceed, so. But our intention is to proceed.
All right.
Wasn't that property up for tax sale?
Every time it goes up for tax sale, the taxes are paid.
But the only issue we have really is the owner is, there's no estate open, there's no owner of the property living in it, but I think the route's gonna be condemnation. And the real issue we've been asked to look at is, if they don't vacate, how do we get them out? And I think the consensus is, at least in the township, they'd rather have a court order than direct police.
So the record owner is deceased, and there was no state open?
We talked about opening up an estate to take it over and administering it, put them out, but we think now because the property's in disrepair, there's a condemnation route that wasn't really available, so that's the, where do we go from there?
And the other thing is, you know, Ed's talked to some people in the building community, if there's an opportunity, we could, we could go in and do work on the building to bring it up to some reasonable code, but that structure's in such bad shape, I don't even know that's possible.
People who are living there, are they relatives of the deceased owner?
There's this.
We think.
We think, okay.
So there's a relationship to the deceased owner.
Okay.
Releasings.
I was just curious, I mean, you see these stories about people who squat in foreclosed homes and stuff like that, I was just wondering if that's what we were dealing with here.
It's akin to that.
Okay, can you take the next agenda? All right, we have an executive session?
Yes.
Okay, executive session on legal items.